It is now October 16th, it's 5 o'clock, and we'll begin our work session. So I'm calling it to order, excuse me, I'm having trouble my chair. We have two items tonight, and again, council, I'd like to remind you once more to refrain from asking questions until the staff presentations are complete. So we'll go down to 3.1, the staff will provide council with the background information and option for policy direction on the issues of texting while driving. So we have our police chief, Guyer, here.
Good evening, mayor and council. So in a previous meeting, council members had expressed an interest in exploring an ordinance related to texting and driving. So tonight, I'm honored to be here to discuss that with you. So in the presentation tonight, we'll look at some facts as to why texting and driving is so dangerous. We will look at what other states and cities are doing and explore their ordinances, and we'll also look at some crash statistics from Goodyear. We'll look at some consideration or discussion topics that council may want to consider if we move forward with an ordinance. And I'll provide council with some alternatives going forward and some existing tools we have in lieu of a formal ordinance. And at the end, I hope to get some direction from council on moving forward or not with drafting a city ordinance prohibiting texting while driving. So just some facts, one out of four car accidents in the United States are caused by texting and driving. Texting and driving is six times more likely to get you in an accident than drunk driving. The average speed in the United States is 55 miles an hour, even though nobody drives that. Taking five seconds to read a text means the driver travels the length of a football field without looking at the road. And the chances of a crash are increased by 23 times when you're texting. So obviously, some pretty powerful facts, and I think we all can agree that texting while driving is very dangerous. So if we look at crash stats for Goodyear, and this is a two-year time period from 2015 through 2017, we had 1,654 crashes in Goodyear. Out of those, out of that number, 208 were considered to be distracted. So the Arizona Crash Forum, which defines distracted crashes, has about 10 different things. I just put a few on the board just for, not to fill up too many slides, and I will explain the other ones to you, but for example, talking on a handheld device, out of that 208, 16 of those were using cellphone and holding a cellphone and talking on a cellphone. Talking hands-free, using Bluetooth, which you'd think would be relatively safe, 12 crashes resulted from that. So there are 180 other distractions to make that 208. For example, being distracted by a passenger in the car, 16 crashes resulted from that. Operating, manually operating an electronic device such as a car stereo, a GPS, and this is where texting falls in, we had 34 of those. Distracted by something outside of the vehicle, for example, swerving to miss an animal, we had five of those. Eating, drinking, or personal grooming, we had 26 of those. And unknown distractions, we had 83. Sometimes people claim they're distracted, but they don't really know why, so it goes under unknowns. We had 83 of those. So if you're interested to see how many crashes in Goodyear involve texting while driving, we look at that category of manually operating electronic device, and as we just said, there are 34 of those, which basically equates to about 2% of our total crashes in Goodyear, so relatively low number. That's also consistent with our statewide crash statistics for Arizona. So in 2016, we have 247,000 crashes throughout the state of Arizona. 776 were determined that somebody was operating an electronic device, which would include texting, so that's actually less than 1%. So, and if you're thinking those numbers are relatively low, here is the problem. So if somebody's involved in a crash, and they don't admit to texting, or somebody doesn't witness them texting before the crash, we can't prove it. Obviously, in a fatal crash, that's a little different, we'd pull phone records and everything, but in your typical crash, unless somebody admits, or there's a witness, we don't know. So actually, that 2% and 1% number could be higher, we just really don't know. So if we look at what other states are doing, 47 states in the U.S. ban text messaging for all drivers. Arizona is one of three states that do not. If we look at what other cities do, so there are seven cities in the state of Arizona which have either a texting or cellphone use ban. And actually, it sort of gets confusing from here because they're all pretty different. I'm not going to go through each of them, but I'll cover a few differences. Phoenix, for example, is the, only the one ordinance that actually is just a texting ban. You can use a cellphone, but you can't digitally send messages on it. All the other six prohibit both texting and cellphone usage totally. So when you go over to the right box where it says offense and fine, you look at the fines, they're pretty consistent through all seven agencies, and I'll turn, I'll put the other three up there in just a minute. And then you see, most of them are primary offenses, and what that means is that if it's a primary offense, a police officer sees a violation occurring, we can pull somebody over and write them a ticket. If it's a secondary offense, that means we can't pull them over, we have to, there has to be another violation to pull them over, and then you could cite them with the texting. So for example, the difference has come in when we're talking about exceptions. So if you take Phoenix's ordinance, the way it's written, you're exempt from the ordinance if you're public safety, if you have a commercial driver's license, if you're a transit driver, or if you're reporting reckless behavior to the police. You're also exempt if you're communicating with a doctor, a hospital, or if you feel you're in physical danger. In Tempe's ordinance, for example, and this is really the only one like this, you have to be in a crash or be driving recklessly for them to cite you for that, and that's the only one like that. So there has to be a crash involved or reckless driving. Some of the ordinances, the remaining ones, exempt drivers on private property. So for example, if we had that ordinance in Goodyear, you could drive through the target parking lot and text while you're driving, and it's okay, but if you got on Litchfield Road, it's a violation. So the bottom line is, although all these ordinances has different, have differences, especially in the exceptions, they all encourage, they allow hands-free devices, all of them, and they all have the ultimate goal of just trying to keep people safer. And there is the other three. So considerations, if it was council desire to move forward with an ordinance, just some things to think about. So first of all, are we interested in a texting ban only, just like Phoenix? Or would it be a wireless handheld device ordinance like the other six cities? Exemptions, we've heard all sorts of different exemptions, obviously, that would be some discussion. Types of penalties and fines, that's probably more of a staff recommendation to do, but it's a discussion. The one thing we don't know, if we had an ordinance, how often is it going to really get enforced? We just don't know till we're there. Obviously, if it gets enforced a lot, there's, you know, resource and staffing issues on the prosecutor's office and the court. We already talked about that it's very difficult to prove these offenses in court without a witness or admission. And probably the most important thing is that we would be the only West Valley city to have such an ordinance. And if we went forward with an ordinance, no matter how much we educated our residents, no matter how much we put it on the social media, you're still going to have a good portion of the residents that don't know. You're going to have people traveling all through the city of Goodyear, from other municipalities, all from the state, from the United States, and our own residents who could get cited for something they had no idea was even illegal. For example, the Phoenix ordinance, before doing this, I had no idea, probably several of you don't either, that they had a texting ban, didn't know. So obviously, something to think about, too. And actually, this is a good point, probably, if anybody has questions to stop.
Joanne?
I was going to ask if you've spoken with any other departments of how they are actually handling, you know, pulling people over, the actual enforcement of it, and, or has it been more of a campaign to let people know, hey, you're not supposed to be doing this? They kind of cite them, but let them go, or, or you know what I mean, you know, talk to them about it, tell me what you...
Yeah, the information we got is, it's not used a lot. They do use it, I think they use it as more of a, they give more warnings, it's more of an educational thing, more than just actually writing tickets.
Okay. Joe?
You know, when I brought this up, I'm not sure what the, the answer is, except being on the road and sitting up a little higher on the bike, I see it all the time, and you can usually spot them because they're either lagging behind, or the guy who hit me not that long ago was distracted. What? Could have been on the phone, I don't know. Even our facilitator, was it Saturday, said he got hit by somebody texting. It seems to me, though, if 47 states have banned it, and apparently, we're on the leading edge again, but apparently on the bottom half, or the bottom three, that the state, you know, I personally would hate to see 80 different ordinances throughout the cities on how to do this. It doesn't make any sense. I don't know what's going to take the state to address this, but again, if there's only three that haven't, I would probably tend to lean on the other 47, that probably something needs to be done. My biggest fear in this area is that if we can prevent one death as a result of some, one of your officers having to go to somebody's house and explaining to them that their son or daughter has died as a result of somebody crossing a line while texting, to me, and again, I'm not sure if we can prevent it with this, but my suggestion after seeing all this, to be honest with you, is I would rather see the state take the lead on this. In our state, I don't know if that's possible, but maybe some type of a PSA, some type of a public service announcement, some type of an effort to get the word out there to the public how dangerous this is. And you don't want this to be your kid, that unfortunately, he's not coming home one night as a result of texting. But it's rampant out there, and it's not just the hands-free. On the way to school, when I go in the early morning, and I see people with the steering wheel between their knees putting makeup on, fixing their eyelashes, you know, I don't know how they do it with the eye, to be honest with you, while they're driving, or even, yeah. I didn't hear that. But, but all kinds of distractions out there, and I think if we work on getting a message out there, some type of program, I could probably go along with something like that, because I'm not sure at this point, having all these different ordinance out there is really going to be the issue. Now, if it was state, at least we'd have something to get the promotion kind of going, and to try to change behavior along those lines. But I think it's important to try to get that message out there, because I really, really want to avoid that one really bad accident as all possible.
Yes, thank you, great, great point. And actually, we're going to talk about some of those, some educational campaigns and alternatives in just a moment.
Sherry?
Thank you for bringing this forward, because I agree that, you know, obviously, we don't want anyone to get hurt, killed, or anything. Technology may be taking care of this, because I know the new Apple iPhone update, if your car is now going more than 35, it doesn't let you text, so we might be getting to the point that technology, but you know, I was a prosecutor in Phoenix, actually, when this came out, and I've never seen, for 25 years working in the Phoenix system, one single, one of these, even as part of a DUI or anything. Doesn't mean they're not going through civil court, but I don't think they're doing, because kind of what we were talking about was, when that came out, I think it was actually in the 90s, when you had to do AAA, BBB, back the old-fashioned way, was, how are you going to prove it? You're not going to get their phones, there's no way you can prove it, even as a civil violation, no one's going to stay around, they don't come to traffic court anyway to testify most times, it's just the officer, so it's just so hard to prove. And then I agree, the patchwork of having, you cross from Avondale to here, and I wouldn't have a problem with the state doing a total hands-free, like California, you know, when you're in certain states, it's hands-free. And so I would totally support education, if we have council funding that we need to use, I think we have our little funding pot, if we need some extra funding to work education, maybe work with our partner cities on this, and just keep getting the word out, especially to those new drivers, because I, no, my question is, though, reckless driving, could you cite someone who's putting their makeup on, having the dog in their lap, under reckless driving if they caused an accident?
You probably could, but actually, in just a minute, I'm going to share an ordinance with you, where that gives us another tool to do just that.
Okay, so you've got another way you could cite people?
I do.
Okay, I'm good, then.
Molly? Chief, thank you for your presentation, it was very interesting, and you gave us a lot of food to think about. My concern, when I saw this on the agenda, I just wondered, I didn't realize Phoenix had an ordinance, or Tempe, either one, and I just haven't paid that much attention to that either. But I didn't, I was concerned that maybe we might, if we passed an ordinance, would we be, would we be doing something against the governor's thought that if you pass a law that is, you know, against the state, they're going to take our money away? And that's what I was concerned with, although I do agree that it is a problem, and it's just, really, we just need to, you know, educate our people. I'm always in favor of banning teenagers from texting, so if we ever got to that part, I think maybe if we could approach some of the legislators and try to get some of them interested, if they would in fact do it, that might be a nice crusade. Joanne?
Brandon? Yeah, I agree with, as you said here, Joe, and Sherry as well, so, yeah, I think it's more of a, I like the follow-along suit with the state as opposed to a patchwork of different regulations. So I've been out there, and I see people when I'm jogging, that there, half the people are going the wrong, texting while I'm, while I'm jogging, so I gotta move quick sometimes, but, but yeah, so yeah, it's definitely an issue, and I see in, in your slides here that you're going to go talk about PSAs, and things that we've done in the past, and things, so, so yeah, so I think it's more of a, I'd rather the state take it, if they're going to move, move forward with that. Thank you.
I can't help but not say, I can't help but say, it's not a surprise that Arizona isn't on the list of people to ban it. And I agree, I, we can't impose something if it's not done in the state, I just, I don't know how it's enforceable, and I'm not even a law enforcement guy, but I'm very curious about the alternatives. The other thing that, you know, we give all the, all the emphasis is on texting, but I think it's the total distraction piece, it's the, it's not what council member Campbell said, but it's, it's the makeup, it's the, it's the animals in the lap, it's the, you know, in the old days, it was the kids in the lap, but now, it's the animals in the lap. So I think if we're going to look at something, if we've got the ability, and I think we talk about all of distraction, not just texting.
Thank you.
Well, I have one more comment. Bluetooth would be tough. I mean, I use it all the time, and staff, you call me, you know? So, and you think about all the businesses in the morning, and they get stuck in that traffic, having to notify someone they're late, you know? So there really is a need for using these instruments at certain times, and I can't imagine people being pleased if they thought, and that surprises me, nobody's said anything in Phoenix about that. But maybe they're not the ones sitting in traffic for an hour, an hour and a half, as the people in the West Valley. I do, I'm always yelling at my husband, I don't know, I heard some other people yell at their husband about it, and, you know, I really get firm, said, pull over, I'm in blood thinners, you'll live, I'll die, I'll bleed to death, so move over. So I, it is, it is a problem, and so we have to be diligent with the people we know. If you're in a car with somebody that's driving you, and they do it, you gotta talk to them about it. So I'm not sure it's our place at this point. The other thing nobody's mentioned is, we only have so many policemen. So we're going to tie that policeman up, giving that ticket, when we need a policeman someplace else in a more, a bigger emergency. So I really would like to do that campaign, and make it, let's get it into the homes, into the schools, and then let's keep repeating it, because, you know, nobody remembers anything unless you at least say it three times, and then just keep drilling at it. And council is gives you a good thing to go to schools and talk about, and HOAs and all that. Joanne?
Thank you. And it would be a perfect time for a campaign with the governor's rollout of what's going to be for the younger generation, but, you know, it's not always texting, a lot, social media, I mean, they're reading, I mean, look at how many times people sit there at the stoplight, and it's green, and you're like, come on, get off your phone, because you know, they're just sitting there scrolling, you know, it's stuff like that, but it has become, it's people's map guiding, you know, it's, people are going places, it's, you know, there's, it is beyond just texting, it is complete, you know, distraction.
I use mine to get where I have to go in Phoenix, so the nights I have appointment, and I don't have staff with me, I would be running all over the state, because I have no sense of direction. So you really do use them, so. Everybody done? Got the floor, chief, go ahead.
Mayor and council, thank you for your comments on that. So as we look at alternatives, we have our new law, which gives us a tool when we're dealing with minors, those 15 and a half, 16, 17 years old, when they're using wireless communications devices. So obviously, this gives us a tool effective July 1st of 2018, to when we encounter minors using devices. So we do have a current statute that exists that other agencies use for texting and driving incidents when there's bad driving associated with it. So, and it's speed greater than reasonable and prudent. So DPS has used this very successfully, other agencies throughout the valley use this, we can use this just as well. And again, it's for people demonstrating some type of bad driving where we can show that they're either texting on their phone, or being distracted for other things. So we have a tool in place already. Educational campaigns. So we are active on social media at the PD, educating our residents about texting and driving. There have been articles in the N-Focus as recent as September, and FIRE at one time had an educational incentive, actually, that's their flyer, their brochure on the bottom right there. There is a PSA on the city's website right now about texting and driving. Our SROs spend time educating students in the schools about the dangers of texting and driving. And actually, a while back, our youth commission had actually made a video about the dangers of texting and driving, and that was on the city's website. Going forward, PD will be ramping up our educational efforts about texting and driving. This is just a sample brochure, it's in draft form right now, we will be coming out with a brochure that we can hand out at different events, and use that in conjunction to our, to our other social media. And there's also, and councilor Loretano hit on this, there are also parental controls on phones, such as the new iPhones, which have a do not disturb function. I know that when I text people, I get something back that says I'm driving, obviously, that's to encourage me to not text them again. So we have those, we have phones which sense motion and will not ring in the car, when the car is moving. There's also other apps out there for parents to monitor when their, when their children are texting or using the phone. So just in summary, I know it's a priority for each of you, like it is me, to make our community as safe as possible. It sounds like the consensus I'm getting is to not go forward with an ordinance right now. So what we will do at PD, we'll ramp up our educational awareness, we'll look at some more programs we can get involved in, whether it be schools, or just out in our population. And if there's any more comments, I would, or direction, I would love to hear that.
Warren?
Thank you for that, and I appreciate that. You know, I was, I was just thinking about, when we were reading about Yuma, were you chief in Yuma at the time when that was going through, has that been since?
That was since.
Since you've been here, okay. You know, the other thing that, this can be a collaboration with all of our different car insurance companies in town, it could be, you know, something that we, to help get out that collateral and get those things out to them, but, but there again, you know, we want the kids to start off driving properly and getting in the habit of that, but we know there's plenty of 20-year-olds that are doing this, so it's just awareness to everybody and the understanding. And sometimes, you know, I've seen some, some pretty powerful commercials that, you know, I hate to say it, but sometimes, that shock and awe is what really does, you know, hit home to what this really does mean.
Sherry?
Yeah, thank you, I think some of these are actually very, very, very good, and I do want to give you kudos, because I know my daughter heard from the, it was either police or FIRE that went to Australia and told them not to text and drive. She, if I even touch my phone, or my husband touches, no, you can't do that, so it may not necessarily be the kids we need to focus in, it might be the adults a little bit more, because I think the kids, it's starting to resonate with them, because they're growing up with this technology. And I think it's something really important when we think about this, it's not just the texting on your phone now, there was a study that just came out, I think, over the weekend or on Friday, that all those electronic devices, the sync with your car, they said that those might be just as unsafe as the car, or as the phone. So I appreciate as much public information that we can get out there, and it's just, I know you've done it before, but it might just be, we keep hitting it, and hitting it, and hitting it, and work and just get it out, so thank you.
Joe?
Chief, I appreciate the presentation, covered all bases with the stats, gave us options on there, and I tend to agree, it's, it's just not the 16, 18, 19, 20-year-olds, it's a, it's a variety of individuals out there, and somehow, we gotta kind of try to change and temper that, that behavior, and I tend to agree with council member Loretano, is that even with all the technology now, distraction is what it's all about. So if you've got technology sending you music, or changing channels, or doing whatever it does now, to let you know what's going on there, that's just another distraction. So I appreciate your efforts to try to get the word out, because ultimately, we're all on the same page, we want to make us a safe city, and anything we can do to increase those odds is greatly appreciated, so again, thank you, chief.
I would be curious what the drivers' ed programs do.
You know, I don't know.
That would be a great source, maybe, to work through, because they work through the parents, as well as the schools.
Yes.
What?
We don't have, the high school doesn't have drivers.
Oh, so now Arizona doesn't have that either?
No, it's the private companies.
What you pay for, but you still have it within the city, so somebody, okay.
I think it says a lot about why we have these issues.
Mayor?
Thanks, Molly.
The Friends of the Library is making a donation to the Goodyear Library, hopefully with the understanding that part of this money that we're giving them, they will sponsor the AAA teen driving class, where AAA comes out, and they talk to all of the kids who are getting ready to get their permit, and maybe if we have our brochures ready, chief, that would be a great place, we did this last year, and there were 150 kids in the room, I shouldn't say that, the fire chief's here, it's, it's in, the room isn't big enough for 150 kids, sorry, but they really are there to learn, and that's a perfect audience, and they're from all over Goodyear and Avondale as well. So we'll let you know when that is, and then maybe...
Yeah, that one might be a really good venue.
Yes, it would be.
To partner with. You know, it's a great presentation, but, you know, the worst thing is, we walk away from this tonight, and then an accident happens, and some young child, or parent, or grandparent is deceased from it, so it is tough, but I think electronics have gotten so strong and so far ahead of it, I think it would just be printing on a piece of paper with little action, in my view, so, chief, thank you.
Mayor and council, thank you very much.
3.2, the council received an update on proposed location of the fire station 1A81 from the fire chief, Fire Chief Luizzi.
Good evening, mayor and council.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So tonight, we're gonna go through Fire Station 181 location review. We'll take you through the fire station study, not the whole thing, but just kind of an overview of that, station modeling, the financials, criteria and recommendation, and then allow for any questions at that point. So back in December of 2016, we had the fire station study that was presented to council with our consultants, ORH, and during that process, we made sure that we looked at not only historical data from the last five years, so they started back in January of 2010, and moved all the way up to January of 2016. So there's a lot of historical data there for them to review. They also looked at existing and planned developments that were coming into the city. They did use nationally-accepted response standards to analyze the function and operation of each of the fire stations. And then they, they identified the optimal locations, and we reviewed all of those locations with council during that time. So here are the recommendations, and that was to be done by 2025, that three optimal locations were to be added to the city. And so one of those was to relocate Fire Station 181 more north, and they recommended the area of Litchfield and Van Buren as that area that was more north. Also additionally, they recommended the West Goodyear Station, they, they said the optimal location was Citrus and Yuma, we have a location that is at Harrison and Citrus. And then also additional locations south of, south Goodyear, south of Ray Road, and so we've identified a spot there at Estrella and Willis. And so council was very generous in moving all of those projects up, and we'd like, hopefully be completed by 2021, have all three of those stations up and operational. So just looking on the map, we can see the three recommended locations there, and again, we listed them out by date, so, and that's according to the study itself. So you can see Fire Station 181 in the area of Litchfield and Van Buren, the West Goodyear Station, that's Citrus and Yuma, and then the South Station at Estrella and Willis. So the heat map that was displayed by council, to council from ORH during that time, really located the best spot for the Fire Station 181 to move that more north. And as you can see from the map there, the red background is the best locations, blue background would be the poorest locations. So as you can see, the most dense red there and yellow sits right around the Litchfield and Van Buren area. I know it's easy to focus on the, the dot that's just a little north of I-10, and that's what the computer picks as the most optimal location, but ultimately, from a, from a landmark standpoint, they picked Litchfield and Van Buren as an area that would be good. So based on those, the last two slides that we showed you, and based on the study, in looking at the Litchfield and Van Buren areas, we set out to try to find areas or land that was available to us. One of those areas that we looked at was 143rd in the northwest corner of 143rd and Celebrate Life Way as an, as an option. We also looked at 137th and Test Drive as an option, and we also looked south of PD Operations, so 143rd, almost in the area of Michael Lewis, just south of PD Operations, would be another area that we, we looked at and researched, to try to find, you know, again, where do we fit in within that Litchfield and Van Buren corridor, within a mile, you know, no more than a mile and a half from that area. So we did some modeling, and we picked the two locations that we felt were the best or most reasonable for us. So 137th Ave and Test Drive, so just south of the I-10, and you can see how the response map shows, again, the four-minute response time is the red, six is the yellow, and the eight-minute response time would be the green. So you can see we have good coverage there, we cover, you know, up into the 183 area, and also a little bit more over into the 184 area, which is in the left lower corner there. So you see, from that area, it does provide us good coverage. And then also, we looked at the area south of PD Operations as another spot. So again, not so far north coverage there, but still within the four to six-minute response time, we creep over a little bit more into the 184 response area. But again, good central coverage that kind of meets the criteria from the study that we presented to council, and really based upon that Litchfield and Van Buren, and trying to find options that were available to us in, in those locations. So then, here's just a look at what the budget, that's been worked up for Fire Station 181. So we have land cost in there, design cost, and then the station infrastructure in the FFNE, so for a total of 5.9 million, almost $6 million there for that. There's other associated costs that go into this as well, and so we looked at 137th and Test Drive, and compared that against south of PD Operations, so again, 143rd, just in the area of Michael Lewis. Both sites would have the standard onsite improvements, they would also have offsite improvements as well. And these improvements are normal and customary to any developer, whether it's the city or whether it's another developer. And then we would also have to have an ADOT-style traffic signal at 137th and Van Buren that would have to be considered. And then obviously, if we go south of PD Operations, we'd have that land purchase. So if I could get Elmo, I just wanted to show a map, to show you how we got to 137th and Test Drive, and what I'll do is just cover up the bottom picture here for now. So this was a previous site that we had, that was just off of McDowell, that was provided to us by a developer. As you can see, more of a pie-shaped triangle shape, not really ideal for a fire station. The study did not take into account that we would need a station in this location. So the idea for 137th and Test Drive is that there could be some opportunity for us there, because the same developer owns that land there. And so now I'll show you that site. So 137th and Test Drive is now shown on the, on the bottom slide, about two, two and a half acres there for us, just south of Test Drive, right on 137th. And go back to the presentation, please. So as we move forward and in our analysis, we wanted to really think about three options here for us, or three criteria for us, really. We wanted to ensure that we minimized our response times, and that really was the focus of the study, was to maximize our response times, minimize our response times within the first five minutes. We also want to be accountable and good stewards of the money that City Council has provided for us. We certainly understand that the money that was provided to us, we heard very clearly during the budget process, that we wanted to make sure that we were staying within budget, and nothing would go over budget as we constructed these stations. So to be creative, to find stations that were cost-effective for us, and, and again, maximize those available resources that you guys gave to us. And also, obviously, we wanted to be close to our optimal site. We found that, you know, when we went out looking for, for land that was available, those three options were available to us, and again, they were all close to the Litchfield and Van Buren site. So based on the discussion that we've just had for the last few minutes, to us, it, it seems that it would be best to try to relocate that station, again, within that corridor of Litchfield and Van Buren, but to move that to the 137th and Test Drive. There are a lot of unknowns with the land that is south of PD Operations right now, a lot of that's infrastructure, roads, and other things that we're just not aware of, and also certainly the land costs, as we've outlined. So right now, based on the information we have today, in trying to move this recommendation forward, that would be our recommendation. And again, it kind of fits into what the study's required, or asked of us, is to, to locate a station within that Litchfield and Van Buren areas. Both sites are very similar, you, it's really just a, a flip of a coin, you know, you know, really depending on what council provides direction for us tonight, but they're very similar regarding response times, you didn't see much of a difference between the two sites on the response analysis maps. So tonight, we just wanted to have that discussion with you, and really get that direction going forward on the, on the sites.
Thank you for the briefing. All right, Council, let's get into discussion on this, who'd like to start?
Chief, we've got three of them coming online relatively quick. Is the design, since we've got three, are we gonna design for all three of them, the economies of scale, save money on that?
Yeah, and certainly how they sit on the land will be different in each site that's available to us. So you may have a little bit of a fluctuation, but yes, as we design all three, the, the idea is to keep the same type of structure, the same type of design in all three.
So the footprint should be the same.
Yes.
Relatively, and maybe turned a little different way.
The orientation of it, yes.
Orientation, but the footprint should be the same on that.
Correct.
Okay. Since there are other businesses close to where the site on Test Drive is, anything raised from any of those businesses next door, or anything along those lines?
We've only met, Sidney Andrew and I have only met with the, the president of the HOA that's over in that area, so Michael Yates. We had a conversation with him about the idea, about the concept of, of locating a fire station there. He would like us to come and meet with them again on Thursday, and have more of the business owners there, so we, we officially haven't heard from all of them, just from the president there.
Did you want to add something? City manager, Brian?
Yeah, and yes, I would just add to that, Mayor, is in, in meeting with Mr. Yates, some of the questions came up as far as.
Tell people who Mr. Gates is.
He is the owner of Yates Pontiac GMC, and has a dealership that would be fairly close to this proposed fire station site. So some of the questions were how often do the fire trucks come in and out, and can they do, would they always come down Test Drive? And, and as Chief had an opportunity to talk to him about how often calls are averaging, I believe, Chief, about every other hour?
Yeah.
For, for an emergency call, because it was kind of unknown how much volume comes out with the fire truck, and then also an ability, can they go out different roads, for example, auto drive, 137th Avenue, those types of things, not always on Test Drive. So he thought it was a great idea, as the chief suggested, to go ahead and meet with the HOA, which we're doing this week.
And did you address the noise, sirens? I'm just curious, because you know.
Yeah, yes, we can, we can talk to the crews about that, but ultimately, our job is to respond to calls in the most efficient manner, and we do use lights and sirens to try to minimize our risks to not only the firefighters and vehicles that we operate, but also the people that we're driving around. So we do have to use our, our sirens and our lights to ensure, there are different pathways that we can take out of the station, certainly, but if something is in that area of Test Drive in, in Litchfield Road, we'd certainly have to take that exit, so, you know, there are times we can minimize it, but not, not all the time.
Sherry?
Okay, I actually went into that little area to kind of see, and I wanted to make sure I had the, the right spot that you were looking at this weekend, I was hoping for something else. I guess what kind of gives me pause is it seems like it's kind of buried back there for a fire station, it's kind of off the beaten path, where most of our other ones seem to be a lot more accessible and easy for the public to see. And so that kind of gives me a little bit of pause. And then the other one, I'm looking at the map, there's that whole, like, when I, when I compare the maps, I, I have a feeling like maybe this, the, the one by Police Ops.
Do I go, I can go back.
Covers, like, that area of Estrella, the other one seems to help out Avondale a little bit more, and this one, there seems to be a hole, when I look at the other one, the one off of Test Drive, yeah, that area of Estrella, so that does give me pause that I think we would be, as that area fills in with homes, that we might not be giving them the best fire coverage.
Yeah, and that has certainly been a development area that you have spoken about recently at council meetings. One of the things that is not taken into consideration here on these maps is future roads. So our current mapping system won't allow the future roads to be added in, so that certainly could improve that response time into that, I'm just gonna see if I can click her here. This is where Councilmember Lortano is talking about, is, is in this area here. As future roads are added in, we can certainly see that there should be some improvement to this red, conceivably because it already does extend out to Estrella Parkway and McDowell. So you would assume that as roads are added in here, that this, this would fill in as well.
And, and just for me, at least at this point, I'd like to hear what everyone else has to say and everything, but I, I do kind of like it, the centrally located with some of our other, with police, our, basically our whole ops center here.
Yeah.
And everything, I think that does add, I don't want to say almost to the city center field, but it's very local and very easy to put all those together, rather than kind of burying it back there.
Sure.
Then my other comment would be that the traffic light, the 500, it's brought about 500,000 for the traffic light, about?
I think it was an ADOT light.
Hundred, so it's the smaller.
Lesser of the.
Yeah, the lesser, but still, 300,000 for a traffic.
300,000, yeah.
Okay. I'd love to hear whatever, those are just my concerns.
Thank you.
Wally? When I heard where the location was going to be, chief, and by the way, thank you for this presentation, and thank you for including the fire station study for us.
Sure.
So we were able to go through that. I had a concern where it was being proposed to be located, and I voiced my concern at that time to the city manager, simply because Goodyear is not building that direction.
To the east.
To the east.
Yes.
And that specific location, to me, would mean that we will be the first call to Avondale in that area, because we'll be the nearest fire station. And also, any incidents on Interstate 10, we would be there, and I just, I really wanted to see the station go Bullard West a little bit, Bullard I-10 in that area.
Yeah.
I just, I think by putting a fire station over there, we're not only gonna isolate our firemen, our city people aren't going to be around there to go in there, to, to, you know, to, there's just not gonna be a lot of Goodyear residents around there.
Yeah, if I could, Mayor, if I could just address that question about I-10. They're gonna get picked up for the I-10 corridor regardless, you know, just because they're just south.
But, but they're right there, chief, they're gonna be right there.
Absolutely, but even if they're at 143rd and, you know, we'll call it Van Buren, they're still gonna get picked up, just, just kind of a point of information. I appreciate your thought, though, thank you.
Bill?
Kind of on that, on that train of thought, putting the fire station at 137th and Test Drive.
Just gonna go back to that slide, oops, sorry.
Basically gives us three fire stations within, I was trying to Google map it, but it was kind of hard, but it's basically within about four square miles.
So you're, you're talking about.
Our fire station.
Yeah, and talking about 174.
183, and then 174, which is across the dirt in, by Estrella Mount Community College.
Yeah, it's, it's essentially just north of Thomas.
Right.
On Dyce Art, so 174 is Avondale Station, which is here, and, and then you would have, oops, I don't know why that changed, sorry, sorry. And then you would have 171, which is.
I'm not even including that in my four square miles, but.
Yeah.
So I think, you know, we can't, we can't influence what Avondale did by putting a fire station within literal eyesight of another fire station.
True.
But we can influence our decision to put a third fire station within four square miles of one another. So I've, I've got a huge concern about that, and then when, as long as you've got this map up, the four-minute response time for this goes well into the. up, the four-minute response time for this goes well into the city of Avondale. We split that border down Van Buren, but, you know, so the city of Avondale starts at roughly central, give or take, but on the south side, and then it really, then it becomes full on, from Dysart east. Make sure I got my directions right. So the station there, really, we provide the city of Avondale with excellent coverage. So if you go to the next slide, I'm sorry, leave this slide up for just one second. South of Van Buren, down Astraia Parkway, we are not in that response time window of the four-minute, that orange area. If you go to the next slide, this was the other development that we talked about two weeks ago, was Hudson Commons, which is south of Van Buren and north of Goodyear Boulevard. Now we're getting, right, thank you, we're getting into that four-minute response time from that fire station. We're pulling our, we still provide pretty decent coverage for Avondale, but we've moved that by just coming a little bit south and then much farther west. I think we gain tremendous central coverage, and I think we can overlook that. And then, if I can for just a second, if I remember correctly, so the fire station study, when we discussed it that night, every station location that they proposed was based on a response time criteria.
Yes, it was, yeah.
With the exception of this optimal location, which was based on historical call volume.
Well, yes, because currently, we don't have a station in that location, so for them to look at optimal sites, they have to take in many factors, which includes response times, historical call volume, and then, like I said, future and current developments that are in there.
But it based its optimal location on, I want to talk about specifically optimal location, because we are using that as the pin to hold this thing to the map.
Sure.
That the, they chose that optimal location based on the historical call volumes.
That's correct.
So if the historical call volumes were to ever change, because we know history always changes, that optimal location no longer becomes optimal. So using history to dictate, and I'm going to lecture for just a second, using history to dictate may not be a good indicator. So in the fire service, in the industry, response time is the factor, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
So, if we based it on these maps with response time, you don't have to be a fire service anybody to see the difference in the coverage between this map and the other map, and that's, I'll leave it at that.
Sherri? All right, Brandon?
Sure.
Thank you, Sherri.
Yeah, I mean, it looks like with the maps, where we're talking about response times and our future growth, it seems like the pros and cons are-
Could you put your microphone a little bit closer, please? It's for your mayor, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. So yeah, so looking at the maps and the coverage, and then looking at the pros and optional sites, if they're not any different, the site-wise, I mean, they're going to get around the same, I don't know if it's even, what the difference might be, the delta in prices between the two different sites, it looks like the south police, south of the police operations looks like the better option, specifically from the maps. And looking at the fire study map, looked like the optional, maybe I was looking at the, at least their dot that I saw, I knew the narrative as closely, but the dot was in their fire study, it looked like it was closer to here than over there, so it makes sense to me that we want it in this location, but-
Yes.
If it's not, if there's not a huge delta on, or a lack of service, or something else holding it out.
And I think, Mayor, one other point to be made is, you know, getting it into that location, in the Litchfield or Van Buren, the optimal location, really helps improve the coverage of the other stations as well. So that was something that they talked about in the fire station study, we had a good conversation about that piece, is moving this station certainly helps improve the response times for the other stations and their reliability around those stations. So there's definitely benefits there of moving that station further north.
Joanne?
So, on, first of all, Sherri, you really hit it on the head without I was thinking about, actually, just about every point. First of all, the sense of where on Test Drive it would be hidden, and I guess, for me, I always believed that, you know, you want your fire stations visible to the public, to the, you know, and that if there's an emergency, someone knows that you're there. So I immediately, you know, kept thinking about that, then looking at the maps, you know, as everything continues to go westwardly and southerly, that's probably not the word, southerly. But it works, you know, the direct, I mean, the maps show. So, I guess my question, you know, you stated that when you were looking for the optimal place, you know, we went by the study, we went by, you know, these different things, and one of the items was just the financial, you know, criteria that we were based, that we were trying to stand, and so on your one slide where you say land is $679,000, what land is that? Is that the land south, right here, or is that purchasing land? I don't know what you're talking about.
So we tried, what we tried best to do was kind of carve out what we would think would be assigned to each line item within that budget. So it's not a definitive number, that's not a definitive number that we would be working, it's a number we'd be working with, but it's not a definitive land purchase price at all. So, what finance thought was the best way is just to assign a certain value within that budget, and, you know, eventually, all tallies out to that 5.9 million. So however we use that 5.9 million is how we would use it within that project.
So, I guess I'm-
So if you're-
I guess I'm a little lost as to why you chose Test Drive then, because everything I'm seeing is that this was the better place, so I'm a little-
Yeah, so the way that we got to that part is, we knew that developer that had the site, as I showed you, on McDowell, also owned a site there as well. And so we would have to obviously go out and negotiate with them on a potential flip of that land, poor choice of words, but moving that land from one site to the other.
So that was, that was an opportunity to look at, okay.
Right.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
For me, though, I still am more prone to this site.
Ultimately, our goal would be, if we went to the Test Drive, to negotiate with that developer at little or no cost to the general fund for the city, so.
All right, thank you.
Joe?
That's what I was kind of going to, you haven't purchased any land, or we don't own any land on the site, the alternative site, correct?
Just to clarify, are you talking the 137th Test Drive?
No, the other one.
South of PD Operations? No, we do not.
Okay. Do we know if they'll sell the land?
We have not had conversations with the developer yet.
Okay. So we don't know if they'll sell it, and there's a difference of about 300,000 between the land purchase price you're estimating, because you don't know what they want for it-
No.
-and the amount of money for the light.
Right, we know the light, that given cost right around 300,000. Now, one of the things that we do know, and just going to make sure that Lisa doesn't whack me, but previously, when PD Operations, when they purchased their land, they purchased it for $4 a square foot. Okay, so that was, you know, three or four years ago that they made that purchase. So based on our need, two to two and a half acres, we got that right around the 350, but we know, you know, from our past dealings, and obviously, as the economy's improved, that that price could be slightly different, so.
Okay. So besides the price of the land, you also have some infrastructure, I assume that's got to go in the ground as well.
Absolutely.
And you don't, you got to ballpark on that, so it's going to be 300,000 plus at the other location, from what you have now.
Yeah.
All right. I think it would be nice to figure out, first of all, whether you can purchase it, because you're still going to have to negotiate, I would assume, with that developer to buy that, to buy that land-
Correct.
-for that piece there.
Correct.
So that would be kind of helpful to know whether that's going to happen or not. I guess I can understand everybody's concern about how that's all shifting in one direction for you can get some more coverage.
Sure.
But I'd like to see the entire picture, the entire cost, and not only that, the timing as well, because I assume you have a schedule to deliver this new site, this new fire station.
Yes.
Where if you have to negotiate price of the land and also put the infrastructure under the ground, that's going to slide your delivery point, I would assume, right?
Yes.
Okay. I'd like to just know all those moving pieces, even though I can understand the concerns on shifting it, the carve-up growth, but I don't see all those pieces in front of me, so it would be nice to have all that.
Understood.
Thanks.
Bill?
From a historical perspective, Station 183, the one up by the park, was built by Suncor at the time, on a piece of free land on the Goodyear-Avondale border. It was free, and it was part of their development agreement to build the fire station there. If you had to design where you would put a fire station in North Goodyear, particularly at that time, that would not have been the location. We recognized that very early on in the fire department, but the land was free, and we put it up there anyway, and off we go. It turns out, obviously, that with our agreement with Litchfield Park, it makes it out very well for them. But I think we have a very unique and rare opportunity in relocating a fire station, and we're relocating it from another one right near the Avondale border. And at the time that that station, the original 181, was built, we weren't part of automatic aid, and we weren't, and it didn't, we were a volunteer fire department. So, we have a unique opportunity to relocate it, getting it in the right spot is critical. Pay for it, not pay for it, it's the, much like the election thing, it's the right thing to do, let's get it in the right spot. I can't stress that enough from a public safety perspective, just looking at these maps should tell you a huge story. There's a, these response maps are the latest, you know, fire station location tools. Back in the day, you know, when I first started, we used circles, used a two and a half mile circle, and that's what you drew, and you went, okay, that worked out. And then, the geography changed, and we said, no, a polygon of, the square turned on its side is really the best way to go, and that lasted for, until GIS came through. If you polygon these locations right now, which I did, they come out pretty close to the four-minute response. Moving this station to the center gives us complete central coverage, overlaps into 184, overlaps into 183, and overlaps into 185's response area. So we get that redundancy that we talked about, which is why we advanced 182, or I'm sorry, the 186 station, because we didn't have redundancy, we've got that now. So I just, from a professional perspective, I just urge everyone to really be looking, and we need all the information, and we took seven or eight months to do the fire station study, I think we can get the information, but I really think getting this, getting this fire station located somewhere in that, in the Bullard-Van Buren vicinity, whether it be here at GMC, or be up the street, around the corner, or even, and I would even push a little farther and say even down Van Buren a little bit, would be a huge advantage to us in the future.
Hey, I'm the last to speak on this. I thought that we were looking at that area really was because of the land price was free, is that correct?
What we know is that we can-
On Test Drive, but that's the impression-
We can negotiate a price that would have little or no cost to-
My impression was, there's no cost, we're going to donate the land, okay? And some of your conversation tonight about being so close to Avondale, I did come into the office and say, I drove over there, and I'm thinking how close the other one is, and then I drove up to the other location you're talking about, so I kind of reversed my opinion from the beginning, so. But I have to say, thank you, because you were thinking of the pocketbook too, when we talked about this, you're thinking about the dollars, and when we came out with the number, we all gasped and said, oh, how are we going to do that, three stations, where are we going to get the money? So, they were really working in favor of what you were trying to do, okay, to not spend if we don't have to spend that amount, but looking at it tonight, I have to say I agree with the other council people, that I think that area is a better area. And, yeah, people are very attached to our fire stations, we have a lot of events at those fire stations. We do training at those fire stations, so they aren't just, they aren't just shut away, so, and I do think it, it looks to me on the map like a balance.
Yes.
And when I first arrived here, 2005, as a councilperson, the number of minutes it takes to get to a person's fire was the most important thing, and we talked more and more about it, and every year, that comes back up again.
Yes.
So it sounds to me like maybe all that time we talked, all the movements and advances we made, that may be going backwards now. And I respect the citizens' money, but I think, I think this time, we have to say citizens, we think this is maybe the best place for it, and we need to spend the money on this and do it. So, that's my opinion, but I appreciate all the work you've done, and I agree with Joe, I think we need a little bit of tracking the money and the land, and what it costs, and so forth, and so on. Anybody else have any questions? Yeah, Brian, would you like to talk?
Mayor and council, and thank you very much, and Chief, thank you, I know that you and your team have looked at this long and hard. So the direction is, we will look at 143rd, or, yeah, 143rd, 145th area. We will bring back estimates and things like that, and as far as what we'd be looking at, because what was shown here was a budget, and then we'll have to really start to look at what would the cost be, infrastructure, and we would propose to bring that to council before we would move forward, but-
I think we would move-
So you have, you have all the information, but I think the direction is-
I can tell you, we wouldn't move forward until we can see what those numbers are, it's really important to us, and to do the right thing, either way.
Yep.
So, thank you very much for the presentation.
So, are we going to only look at one location, or are we looking at second?
We're going with the study, right, on the location?
My, what I understand, my direction is to look at locations south of PD Operations, but also other available land that would be in this general corridor.
In the area of the study.
Can you come back with two or three?
That would be a blessing.
I appreciate it. All right, council, and we're just going to finish this meeting up, and you know we have a special meeting following this, but there was a lot of things happening on current events, that we know we kind of dropped them, and so the next week, we get together, and nobody ever says anything about them, so, who went on the tour, Michael Lewis with us?
Michael.
Yeah.
Oh, just you and Erwin.
Oh, well, why don't you talk about that, though? We took the fulfillment-
All right, Mayor and I went to a tour of Michael Lewis and company, which, as you know, is the most gorgeous building on Van Buren, next to the municipal buildings here. We were treated to elegant gourmet lunch, which we did not expect, and we were welcomed with open arms and given a wonderful tour, and it was amazing at what all this company does do. They are in charge of all of the amenities on an airplane, from the beverage cart, to the Kleenex, to the cuttery, to the dishes, to the food, and they have specific contracts with every one of the large airline companies in America and in the world, and they are just a delight, and they're so happy with Goodyear, they love their location, their building is gorgeous, and they just couldn't say enough about us. But since she's given me the mic, I want to talk about one more thing. We're very proud of our mayor, she was given a distinguished award Saturday evening by the Meals of Joy for her dedication to our community, she and Don Mellon were honored, and we just wanted to congratulate you, Mayor.
Thank you.
And we love the pictures on Facebook, they were wonderful, and you and Ron can certainly cut a rug when you get with it.
Thank you. Joanne, will you talk about Foot Solutions and Special, yeah, and Astraia Cavaentry?
Yes, they had a anniversary ribbon cutting for two of our Goodyear businesses, Foot Solutions and the, oh, what's the cavaentry, I forget the first name of the cavaentry, Astraia Cavaentry, sorry. Australia, Australia Cavaentry, sorry. And nice turnout, a lot of businesses there, a lot of people from the area, and, and I was going to bring up Meals of Joy, you know, that was a fabulous event and a great cause for meals for people elderly that can't get out and, and get meals, and so it's a wonderful delivery service, and, but honoring you and, and Mr. Mellon were, were very exciting. I, I appreciate the fact of everything that, that you do out there, thank you.
And one more thing, I went to the Special Olympics, Arizona State Swimming and VIP reception this week, and it was at the high school, Millennium High School, and so, you know, the person that helped carry the torch, the contest about tip a cop? Okay, well, Goodyear Police Department beat all the other three cities. So because of that, then, that police officer helped with the young man to light the torch.
Oh, nice.
But I can't tell you what a meaningful evening that was, and how active and how you take somebody that, you know, has some challenges, and out of that you make something really good, and if you saw the joy in their faces and, and the things they could do, I was very honored to be able to speak at the event on behalf of you, Council, as well as our city, and thank them for having the Special Olympics in our city. And Ronnie Jones, you know, Jones of Sub-Zero Sun, has always a leadership part in this organization, he's gone to Washington, he's gone to other places, and so at the end of this, he gave me one of his medals that he has won at another event. So I just wanted to tell you, it was very impactful for me and for everybody that was there, I was very proud of our city. And then one more thing is that this is coming up, the Military Veterans Resource Network is going to be opening their building very soon.
Hey.
And we had the honor today of going in early on and looking at the facility, and it's pretty fantastic for all of our military veterans and families, so it's, it's the future in taking care of them. So with that, does anybody have anything, let's see, I guess the city manager, you have any other events, you have the current events you wanna tell us about?
Uh, Mayor, Council, just a reminder, Fall Festival, I mean, it's a busy time of year, but the Fall Festival over at the Goodyear Ballpark is Saturday from 5 to 9, so very family-friendly event, and so that'll be going on this weekend.
Thank you, Shannon, I, Shannon, Brandon, I cut you off, go ahead. You had something to say, you said?
Oh, I was just gonna say, I went to the Arizona Manufacturers Summit at the Biltmore last week, which was good, Jeff Flake was there, three other congressmen were there, and a lot of manufacturers were mentioned there as well, so it was a, it was a good event to meet more manufacturers in the state of Arizona, so.
Well, that's really a good learning process and to see what our companies are doing. All right, so the next meeting.
Bill has something.
Oh, Bill, I'm sorry.
No, it's all right, I usually don't participate in this, so.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
I, I wanted, gonna, I'm gonna pull a Joanne here for a minute, I'm gonna pat myself on the back for a moment, but I also wanna.
Hey, hey, what does that mean?
I don't know, I guess.
Excuse me.
That was a bad kind of compliment, I guess.
No.
Anyway, we had, we had the strategic plan, strategic planning retreat this past weekend. I wanted to say thank you to everybody for, you know, I think just the engagement, it was, it was a different experience.
So you're being a Joanne cheerleader, is what you're being, oh, I see, okay.
Something like that.
Uh-huh.
But on that, kind of on that same note with strategic planning, I'm not gonna be here next Monday, I will be.
I heard that, mhm.
Actually, ICMA with Winnet and Christian, myself and Mike Letcher, who's done previous retreats, we are teaching two pre-conference work, work sessions on strategic planning, so we'll be in San Antonio.
It'll be interesting, did you get any hints from what went on for our two days? 'Cause it was different, it was very effective, and you know, it was a struggle for some people 'cause it was some, it was so new, but it was interesting to watch people at the beginning, little tight, little tight, and not knowing what to do, are we gonna talk to each other? I don't know, 'cause it was with staff and us, we were all mixed in one room together, and then watching people's faces and seeing, the first attitude, I'm not, I'm not contributing to this, I could tell them, no, I'm not, but they did, and the staff, and it was, you know, it was unusual to have staff have the same say-so that we do in the same room, and making suggestions, so it was different, and we played a lot of little games, and at first I didn't think that was the great way, but it ended up like it was, so I thought it was very effective, and I know, that's my opinion, and there are other people that have an opinion, but I have to tell you, the end, we got most of the work done, and we liked what it said, so. All right, the next meeting is going to be on the 23rd, it'll be a regular meeting at 5:00 PM, so now.